All right, so we'll get started then. So this is a work session, not a regular session, much more informal. So, presentation and discussion from the Director of Growth Initiatives from the University of Arizona Maricopa Campus. And this is going to be James Smith.
Chairman. Thank you. Chairman, supervisors, excited to be here today. This is kind of a multi-year process. When my predecessor, Tim Kinnable, was here, there was a partnership between the county, the city of Maricopa, and the University of Arizona to do some feasibility studies of what could happen with or the potentials for the University of Arizona Maricopa campus. And really, what I think you're going to see today is really exciting for the future of economic development, really, I think will position Penile County to be a further powerhouse going forward, as it will provide research parks, tech parks, and the ability for further higher education, which, as you know, we do lack or we lag behind both Pima and Maricopa County in terms of bachelor's degrees. So, what you're going to hear from Malcolm Green with the University of Arizona today, again, is very exciting for the future. And I want to add that Christian Price has joined him as well to talk about what the opportunities are for the city of Maricopa, so.
So, I was, so a lot of the folks that are, you know, this is, of course, being streamed, might wonder, what does this have to do, why are you here, your economic development, and this is education? But I know Christian Price used to sit on the GPEC board with myself. Whenever you're trying to attract any industry or worthwhile business here, the first thing they look at is how educated is the workforce, et cetera? And can they move their families with their kids here? How's the education? So it's of utmost importance for economic development to have a strong education system. So, that's why we're presenting all this today.
Right. And the other key part of that is that partnership with universities where there's opportunities for research, for businesses to partner with universities. And also, I think when you'll hear about that tech park, it provides an opportunity for companies to move in to ready-made space that can support their operations. So it really is multifaceted, what I think you're going to hear today.
Yeah, and none of our universities have good sports teams this year, but they still, we still have good education, so that's always important in between.
That is. With that, I'm going to introduce Malcolm Green to you.
And just Chairman, before we get started, just for the record, James did submit a presentation for today's agenda item, and that presentation is attached to the actual agenda item as well.
Thank you.
All right. Are you able to load the presentation? Okay. All right, hopefully you can see this. Again, my name is Malcolm Green. I'm the Director of Growth Initiatives with the University of Arizona. Thank you so much for your time today and allowing me to share this exciting project as well. Just as James alluded, originally, this was, I envisioned this project while being the Director of the Maricopa Ag Center in 2020, and assembled a group, including Tim Kinnable, Mayor at the time of Maricopa, Christian Price, City Manager Rick Horst, and several others from Penile County as well. And in that came an idea that I really got some immediate traction from the county and from the city as well. So, here's my presentation. With everything being the University of Arizona, our mantra is always first to acknowledge that the university resides on the land of indigenous lands and native peoples. And so, we commit even to this project, which is focused in Maricopa, where the university has a large research station today. It's the home of the Hela River and Ochene Community. So we just recognize that and to their efforts and support of what they're doing as well. So, if you're not familiar, the Maricopa Ag Center is not incorporated into the city of Maricopa today. It actually, about 300 acres is incorporated. That occurred when the city first was incorporated as an entity in 2003. But we are on the northeast corner, and you'll see that a little bit later, but that's where we are geography-wise. That is an image from Google Maps of the perimeter of our 2,100-acre site today, so it's fairly substantial. On the upper, let's see if I can get my pointer to work, the, on the northeast corner is where our main infrastructure is today. We have administration buildings for the University of Arizona, Arizona Experiment Station. So it was founded as primarily agricultural research. It was moved to this site in 1979. It was moved from Maricopa County, the intersections of 40th and Broadway, because the city was moving around them. So, they moved to an area they thought there wouldn't be many other inhabitants, and I think there was a Circle K and the U of A there for a long time. But we're nestled into that northeast corner. We have our major tenant beyond of what the university does is a USDA research site. They call it ALARC, Arid Land Agricultural Research Center. And so, that's substantial as well. Between the two entities, we've probably employed over 100 research scientists and staff to do agricultural research and so on. When I came onboard, however, I realized that all the land that we occupied, we were only using around 500 acres for our actual research, and I was subleasing the rest. So therein bore an idea of not selling, but to repurpose and determine the highest and best use from the university perspective. So, at the same time, I was contemplating this, and the university was contemplating this, you see the bullets on the right-hand side begin to become more significant than ever, and that is the growth of the region, growth of Penile County, growth of the city, major expansion occurring. We're seeing more companies coming in. We're seeing big ag, as big agriculture as we once knew it is, is not quite as dominant in that area, and we're seeing greater diversification of other industries in the region. The university was thinking the same thing as well, and we said, hmm, there's some opportunity. There's no major university research park or business incubator currently existing in Penile County. The Maricopa Ag Center has, fortunately, its greatest asset is location, location, location. It's conveniently located to the fifth-largest metropolitan area. The success is really strongly tied to our ability to support and create new educational and work opportunities, employment opportunities for the tribal communities. When we, early in the project, we presented this, again, this site is not even well-known within the Tucson community, within the University of Arizona. The President Robbins did come out several times, and he said, I had no idea the university on 2,100 acres just south of Maricopa County. So his wheels began to move as well. But a third of the undergraduate students in Tucson originally come from and reside from Maricopa County. So, all these make interesting rationales to start exploring something bigger, and that's really part of the university's and all, you know, higher ed communities, is to continually expand and seek opportunities to expand its mission and add value to the state. So, the punchline is this, the idea was born to repurpose a portion of the acreage for a greater benefit for the county, for the community, and for the university as well. So, that is it. So, a little more, another image is just, again, looking at our footprint in relation to the city of Maricopa today. And you see the city center maybe a mile below our facility, below our acreage. And you're also seeing that, in terms of expansion and growth, it represents a strong, attractive opportunity to do something within the region. Again, most of that area is, resides in Penile County. We have, are investigating with the city the prospects of annexation. That is not, we've not concluded that as well, but certainly, we see benefit from both sides to do this as well. But you probably know this, but just like the Casa Grande area and Penile County overall, there's been significant growth in that region. It was incorporated in 2003, the city was, around 1,000 residents in 2000. And I don't know, Christian, what the current stat is, but I think the population and residence is probably in the 75,000 to 80,000 range in 2023. The growth is, who knows? Some people think half a million, some think it could support a million people in size in 30 to 50 years. But this is what we do know. Just like a lot of this region, it has a highly educated workforce. A lot of it is a, what I would call, a bedroom community that supports Intel, Northrop Grumman, employers both in Casa Grande and in Maricopa County. And so, you're seeing just phenomenal growth of the region. So that gives us credence that we want to do this. So, the upshot of it is, we had all this, and they said, well, let's determine what the impact of doing, what's the feasibility to determine what the highest and best use. So, we collectively went after an EDA grant and secured a $400,000 grant to do a feasibility study on behalf, and it was led by the city of Maricopa, and the university was involved as well. And this is what really, the vision was to create a transformative project for the U of A, something that is very bold and audacious to dramatically advance our research programs, our educational programs, and contribute to the economic development of Penile County. So that is really our mission. And I showed you the map earlier, but in terms of putting together just a financial model, we did the supposition of repurposing initially 900 acres that would leave all of our existing research operations on our agriculture side intact, unaffected, and thriving. But it really gave the university a chance and opportunity to expand research programs in like technologies, in engineering, in manufacturing, in healthcare. We could do anything that really reflects what we saw as the trends in Penile County. So, that's really what we did from a standpoint of a scope. The outcome of this feasibility study that collective team worked on and we completed this last May was three takeaways, and they're not that surprising. One is a great opportunity to expand the research programs, to create a thriving community, both from a university, government, and commercial industry, research, an R&amp;D focus almost of making a part of, using that land for research, expanded research beyond agriculture. The second, which really is in the crosshairs of economic development, is to commit a substantial amount to creating a 600-acre area of innovation. And that really means mixed-use development, hotels, perhaps a city center, and a tractor to bring new businesses into Penile County. And along with that, there's a part of the University of Arizona, but it is a 501(c)(3), is our tech park, the University of Arizona Tech Parks. They have several sites in Tucson, and they would be onboard to create a 300-acre tech park, business incubator, all the surrounding services in Penile County as well. So, just that center column is tremendous economic business attraction and, like you said, economic catalyst. The third area.
May I just ask you a question?
Sure, sure. Go right ahead.
This is going to be similar to the U of A tech park on the south side of Tucson?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, right, right. So that's the model that we're using for that element of it. The university would still build its research campus and so on. But then, your punchline, Mr. Chairman, is spot-on, that all of these are possible, but none of this is possible without a commitment to education. And with the growth of Penile County, and with the, really, the growth in Maricopa County, and the needs, and the changing needs in Penile County, we see a tremendous opportunity to, the first time, establish a satellite campus, satellite educational campus on that site as well. We are proposing something in the non-traditional space, that you could do traditional programs. You can also, you know, develop custom programs that reflect the industry needs of the region as well. So that is really the three opportunities. So we mixed all this together, and there's an organization based in Phoenix, Rounds Consulting Group, that does a lot of financial economic modeling. You're probably familiar with Jim Rounds. So he has quite the reputation. And so, we said, Jim, shake this up and determine what could we, what does the numbers look like? So, what it came back was startling, looking at five, 10, and 15-year increments. We saw, we see, if we executed our plan, is an economic impact of over $95 billion in 15 years, potentially adding 50,000 new jobs to the region, obviously generating employment income, tax revenue for the state, for the county, for the city as well. But it's like a hockey stick. It's slow in the beginning, and then it ramps up significantly. Even, and there's each one, this model was built on growth of each of those separate segments I mentioned earlier. An area of innovation, a 600-acre development, a 300-acre tech park development, and development of the satellite campus, and student attraction for that. So, that is, has lifted all of our spirits and has turned this from an idea into one of the top growth initiatives for the University of Arizona right now. And it's right in Penile County. So, who knows what it could look like at this point, but the point of this slide is to really present scale. Even if we, we could potentially grow into some other areas and some excess capacity or some additional capacity at the Maricopa Ag Center. But a lot of things have come forward in that, and I'll show you one. As a block diagram, one of the ideas in the city of Maricopa does not have what I call a legitimate town center today. So, you know, we've had architects, HOK, the Architectural Company, looking at innovative designs from coast to coast. And so, one idea is to create a town center, much like City Gilbert, City of Chandler type of a thing, where you kind of draw into that. And the theme from the university is, we want a live, work, and play environment. So there's going to be housing, mixed-use housing, the tech research park. Again, location specifics are to be determined, but we would allocate space for commercial development. Again, we are maintaining a theme of research and development, so it'll be technology-focused. In other words, I would not put a manufacturing facility in the heart of this, nor would I put a feedlot or something like that. So, but this would be certainly in this. So, an idea that came forth by working with the city, the idea was even the prospects of, you know, doing something like a city center and doing mixed-use housing, family housing, student housing around that, a green space over to the tech research park, and then continuing on. So, this is, this is a lot to go. If we, this is not an overnight project, it's probably a 20-plus-year project to do something of this scale. But that's what the university is embarking on with the support of a whole team from the university, from the city, Penile County government's support and awareness of this project is deeply important. On the educational side, we've already engaged in our teaming with Central Arizona College to try to complement degree programs and give advancement programs, like even in the engineering side of a two-plus-two, and to matriculate to four-year degrees. And then to, again, focus and support more on, for supporting Penile County. So, this was a, there's a presentation that I gave to President Robbins in June, and we've stuck to this, and so the team is currently, we're launching a large, we call this the best-kept secret, we've kept this under wraps for about three years, but now we're launching internal and external communication campaign for this. We're refining the financial model, how we're going to manage it. And we already have obtained tribal endorsement for this, but, and they are very excited about this as well. Pursuing annexation, but we're really getting down to the road, developing this five-year initial business plan, going after some large-scale funding for doing this with the state support and with the federal support and grant support. So, we have developers already caught wind of this, and we will be engaging some developers on appropriate things, but we're kind of keeping them at bay until we really have our master plans done as well. Anchor companies, there is a nucleus of companies and industries that are already working with the University of Arizona, and it's not surprising. It starts in the agricultural area, and it now is what we call ag-tech. It is, it's really everything that I personally have a background in, autonomous vehicles. And so, it's autonomous vehicles for the off-road market. There's obviously, Phoenix is really known for the hub of transportation and the on-road mobility. But a lot of industries, a lot of corporations are moving their testing and their technology divisions for off-road autonomy to this region as well. And so, that's just a natural thing. There's biosciences, biotech. President Robbins has, not surprising with his background, has, really wants to do things in healthcare and medicine as well. And then engage partners like Christian Price and MEDA, and the city, and James Smith as well, from the county, to help, once we get these packages put out, to start articulating this to prospective companies and prospective developers as well. So, I just, that's where we're at in the project. Our desired timeline to start the first building is spring of 2025. I've got a lot of work to do to start getting some funding to put together for do something like that, because it's virgin ground. It's agricultural land, so we need a lot of infrastructure to be placed in that as well. But I personally see benefit of making, taking a stand and putting industry, giving it a tractor place for industry to the region, and then complement that with residential housing. But I think it'd be short-sighted to just pull the easy trigger and continue to do the residential thing. So, for the growth of the region, we really need to be the attractor for companies in that. So, that's my presentation and briefing for all of you. My contact information is shared. With that, I open up to any questions you might have.
Okay, so, a lot of folks will never go to college, their kids will never go to college, but they understand the importance of this. How might this filter down to the high schools in the area and the rest of the county other than the Maricopa area? Because we're a big county, we're the size of Connecticut.
Right.
So, is there anything that they'll work with, the kids coming up, that may never attend this facility, but yet still there's benefits for the whole education system in the whole county?
I think the, well, not, I don't think, I know the answer is yes, there's opportunities. We are so early in this, the only ones that we've vetted this with so far are like members of the, within the city, you know, council members of the city of Maricopa, MEDA board members, which includes the public schools in Maricopa. We see potentially the university standing up some charter schools of our own, expanding and strengthening the partnership with like Central Arizona College and so on, to really team and try to do more appropriate education. I mean, it's not all going to be, you know, high-level engineering and technology degrees. I see a latent demand from the employers for trade skills, for, you know, tech positions. So, I think those are the appropriate kinds of positions.
I know at one time, Central Arizona College was affiliated with NAU, and if you took classes at CAC, you were getting NAU credits. Were you talking something like that, where if you start into CAC, you could be accredited towards U of A?
That's exactly what I'm saying. And so, and there's also high school programs. I don't, not being familiar, I'm very familiar with how it works in like the East Valley and Maricopa County, a lot of, and with Mesa Community College, working with high schools and do credentials and degree programs in parallel while a student is in high school to get those credentials at a community college level. I don't know in Penile County if that exists as well with CAC and universities and high schools as well. But the short answer is, we're open to that. We're very early in the process, and as part of the implementation, once we actually get to the educational thing, is to really try to engage schools across Penile County as well.
Thank you. I think, you know, I look at this like it's another piece of the puzzle, because we got a whole bunch of pieces floating around. I think this is a great, great addition to that area. Universities tend to draw young crowds. I think it makes cities more vibrant. I mean, that's why I live where I live, because there's you guys nearby, right? So, in any town that I've gone to where there's a university, it's always this, you know, really kind of happening kind of place. I mean, people come, it draws businesses in, it brings a lot of advanced skills, which is what you need in Maricopa. I know ex-Meier Price here has been trying to drive this for many years, not this, but other things as well. I think this, like I said, it's another piece in the puzzle. It's really great.
Well, great. Well, that concludes my briefing, but thank you all so much. We will certainly, through James Smith, we will keep you abreast of developments.
Yeah, thanks.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. PZPA 006-23, a major comprehensive plan amendment proposal. Sanguida.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, both members. This is a work session for the major comprehensive plan amendments for 2023. And to begin with, we, I just want to give you an overview first of the schedule that was followed this year. July 20th, we had the first work session with the planning and zoning, and we had a continued work session for the county-initiated item for one of the amendments, and which is the environmental stewardship, chapter seven. August 11th, we had the agency review period ending, and the last that we had was a CAC meeting last week, which was 7th of September. Moving forward today, we are sharing all proposals for this year, the 2023 major comprehensive plan amendments. And moving forward, we have October 19th, the planning and zoning hearing, which is for, again, for all the proposals. And November 15th, this tentative public hearing, assuming that all of them move forward in the same, at the same time. These are the proposals for the 2023 major amendments. The first one, as shared earlier in the work session, was the PZPA 006-23, environmental stewardship, which is the county-initiated item. The next two are the solar projects, PZPA 009-23, which is the CLO Solar, and PZPA 01023 is the Casa Grande Carmel Solar Project. The first one is the one which I would be presenting, and I'm the case planner for this, which is the renewable energy sources portion. This application is requesting a date for the chapter seven, specifically sections, energy subsections, renewable energy sources, energy generation and transmission, goals, objectives, policies, and the final portion, which is the appendix D of the 2019 Penile County Comprehensive Plan document. Proposal is expanding the renewable energy sources to include additional category besides the solar. Currently, we have our document which kind of focuses only on solar. We would like to include the other energy sources into our document to be able to support projects moving forward. We want to also update the goals, objectives, and policies under the same chapter, and appendix D, which is glossary of additional terms that are going to be added in this section of the renewable energy source. Objective is basically to provide a comprehensive list promoting quality. Objective is basically to provide a comprehensive list, promoting quality, safety benefits to Pinal County residents, and also expanding the toolbox and providing options for these sources, creating diversity within this category. Purpose, ensuring projects proposed in future that could fall in the category of this renewable energy sources can be tied to the policy statement that is, that would be existing in the comprehensive plan. And bringing the Pinal County Comprehensive Plan document up to date with current trends in energy sector, which is also for the state of Arizona. Some of the sources that have been used are directly Department of Energy, Arizona, EIA, the US Census data to update some population information and data, and SRB. Currently, we are, as I had mentioned earlier, focusing only on the solar energy. The document is heavily kind of talking about that. We would like to include the following: bioenergy, geothermal energy, hydrogen, hydrogen power, and wind energy. Some of the examples that I would like to share are, I'm just kind of giving an overview, is solar energy in terms of photovoltaics, which is PV. We do have a lot of solar farms. Concentrating solar thermal power, CSP systems. Bioenergy, again derived from organic materials called the biomass. An example shown directly from the source of EIA. Types of bioenergy mass with crops and agricultural residues, wood, vegetable oils, animal fats, animal manure, sewage, trash, garbage. Geothermal energy systems, heat harness from beneath the earth. We know that these are not large-scale projects. These are really small-scale projects that we have received in couple of, past couple of months at the county. Hydrogen is another source, energy carrier. It's produced from domestic sources, natural gas, solid thermal, geothermal or biomass, or from processes which are, again, in the experimental stages, electrolysis, biological water splitting, steam methane and reforming. Hydro power, usually we associate this energy source with large Hoover Dam projects and harnessing power from a very large water bodies and rivers. However, with technological advances and researches, really small facilities use microturbines, take advantage of water flows in municipal water facilities and irrigation ditches. Wind energy, again, this is not at the large scale that we are trying to propose or promote. This is one more form of energy, which is harnessing power from wind through wind turbines, collecting and converting kinetic energy into electricity. This is a really very kind of a micro example that has been currently used at the ARSU School of Sustainability. And updating the appendix G glossary to include new terms included in the renewable energy section, I have updated that and shared both the documents, the existing comprehensive plan document, and also the newer version with an updated changes that have been in the packet. I'm open for any questions at this point in time.
I have none right now. Supervisor Kavanaugh. Looks like.
I have no questions.
Looks like no questions?
One quick one. So in our plan, I know it's always fluid because it looks like somebody just splattered paint on the wall on the plan. But in solar, we have so many areas in the county that are designated as green energy. Many are not built and may never get built. And so I think, are we doing a study that shows how many acres in the county that we have designated as green energy for solar and what's built, what's planned? And what that economic input would be to the county, what the energy output would be if they were all built? And do we want to keep going down that path?
We would like, I'm sorry to interrupt, but yes, that, that research, or I would say the presentation is almost ready. We would be, we were trying to get an appointment with the board to share this in an upcoming work session, to share the map at a comprehensive level, the area and the acreage, which was, which has been verified by me. And we have the GIS department working to share these maps at a zoning level and at the comp plan level. That presentation, I'm sure, is ready, and Brent would probably give some insight into this.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, honored guests here today. Yes, we have been working on a presentation. The presentation, all the research has been completed. It's had legal review. We've been asked to hold off for a little more time because there's some coordination going on with the Arizona State Land Department to get their input in terms of that information. So once, once we get that information, have those conversations, then we'll be prepared to come to the board with that information.
Do we, do we have any motivation or any interest in looking at like the mini-nuclear facilities? Because they don't take up much space. They sure don't take up thousands of acres.
So we have looked at the small nuclear energy sources. We talked about it with the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission asked us to remove that out of the draft at their work session. So it has been removed, but Sangida and I just met the other day, and we've come up with a plan on how to get that back in. The challenge with nuclear is it's, it's not green energy, and it's not a renewable source. So our plan is to get it in there as, as part of, of the amendment, but not necessarily in the renewable source section, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
Just to add on that, from the CAC members, we did get comments that that could be one more suggestion. So I will go ahead and add that in the formal presentation when we have the public hearing that would be added for the, in the comp plan document.
Thank you.
Okay. If that's it, then thank you.
Thank you.
PZPA 009-23, comprehensive plan request for SWCA CLO Solar. Ryan?
Yes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, Board, and Pinal County at large. I'll be presenting case PZPA 009-23. It is a solar facility project by HAC CLO LLC. They're requesting a redesignation of 1,086 acres from MLDR and employment to green energy production. It's located south of East Laughlin Road, north of Silver Highway, west of South Highway 87, and on both sides of La Palma, near Coolidge. Here we can see the project. It is centrally located in the county, again, not very far from Coolidge. Here is a comprehensive plan currently, with the western portion being moderate low-density residential, and the purple portion to the east being employment. Here we have the zoning map. It is currently all GR with surrounding GR and the city of Coolidge buffering it. The current conditions are it is relatively flat and is currently farmland. This proposal will generate up to 150 megawatts of photovoltaic energy. It includes a solar array field, a battery energy storage system, a projected substation, generation tie transmission line, and it's timed to be completed by the end of 2026. Staff recommends denial. And are there any questions?
What were the reasons for denial?
Yes, sir. The proposal would change 65, I'm sorry, the proposal itself is 65% employment. It has access to Highway 87 and I-10, which is ideal for commercial development. There is a historic canal to the south of it, and the comp plan considers this a temporary use.
Can you go back to the map?
This one?
Yes. So future employment, but are things coming close? Is it, or is this, if this happens, would this block something else from coming in?
Potentially. I know, I was talking to with our director today, this is within the city of Coolidge's planned like growth area in the future.
Yeah. And part of the question too is, in the meantime, can you do this and then take it out and then grow later? Best of both worlds.
So, you know, interesting questions. And keep in mind, this is just a work session today, and we've got some more time to develop this. As part of this process, we do advertisements, not only advertisements, but we, we actually send out to all of the, the necessary entities for comment. And those are gradually tricking back, trickling back in. We, we got stuff from, for example, the Arizona Game and Fish Department. We have not heard from Coolidge yet, but I think that you guys, in writing, we have not heard from Coolidge yet. But I think, as you guys know, they've been having a significant conversation about solar and them not wanting any more solar in their area. This is a key location in terms of, it's on 87. It is in Coolidge's planning area. What you can't see from this map is this is actually really close to Coolidge. Coolidge is just to the north, and it's not far at all from, from Nicola Motors, which is, which is just to the, to the east of this site. One of the things, when I ask staff to look at this and consider it, is we've heard multiple times from the board in the past that we don't want to take future economic development or employment areas and, and make them residential or, or multifamily residential, et cetera. So, so there is some concern. Casa Grande is growing this direction from, from the west. Coolidge is growing south and east, and there's a considerable amount of economic development in the area, as well as this is where our major transportation routes are to support economic development in the area. The other thing that, that staff looked at and brought to my attention is there's a lot of solar that is planned and going into this area. I'm sorry, we don't have that map today, but when we come back to the board next time, we'll actually show a map that shows already proposed solar that's, that's in this area. And in the comprehensive plan, the intent is to look at the diversity of uses and to focus on, on opportunities for economic development. Solar doesn't contribute jobs and very little tax revenue. So it's, that's the challenge from our perspective. But staff's coming at, commenting on it strictly from comprehensive plan and, and the viability of the comprehensive plan, if that's helpful. We will reach out to Coolidge, and I anticipate that we will get a letter from them in, in writing.
Okay. Supervisor Kavanaugh, this is your district. Do you have any thoughts on this? I don't know if you're able to see these graphics.
Yeah, I saw, and I reached out, the CD we have not heard back yet. But on the other hand, you know, once again, a property owner has decided what is best for their land. And the question is, what is, what is the appropriate rule of government to accommodate landowner, what's not, they could have smaller, whether they could have taken more. So that's my concern. But we're in the city of Coolidge.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Ryan?
No, sir.
Okay. So when white, we, when white, we hear about this again?
It's scheduled to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission first, and I'm going to say the November 14th, we'll be bringing it back to the board.
Okay.
15th, my fault.
Oh, you were close, you know. Kind of, you know, bullseye kind of closed.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Number four, work session, PZPA 01023, comprehensive plan request, SWCA. Glenn Back.
Oh, thank you. Good morning. Casa Grande Carmel Solar is to the west and south of Casa Grande. The proposal, there's, I believe, four owners, Altera Properties, Michael Hu and Leozon, Quantum Resource, Nevada Limited Partnership. Acreages is about 955.875 acres. Location is intersection of Cornman Road and Bianco Road. It's on the west side of the southwest, western Casa Grande area, just north of Interstate Eight. This map here shows you the, the overall general location, and as you could see, it's somewhat west of the previous case. And currently, the land use designation is MLDR in the, in that yellow portion to the north of the project boundary. And then unemployment is, is within that southernmost pink area. And of course, the proposal I need to take the nation as being a green energy production. This shows you more clearly the overall project area, and then you may notice that there's a number of streets designated to the southwest. Future slide, I believe, has aerial photos, so there's a older planted subdivision there that never fully apparently materialized. And as you could see also, that you have a couple of future freeway exits and entrance from, from the eight.
Is the racetrack right, the racetrack's right south of that, isn't it?
Correct. That's, yeah, Tessa, mile or so, I think, roughly to the south. And here in the aerial gives you a pretty good idea of what's going on out there. You'll notice there's a significant wash to the east.
This is a Tessa.
Right there. Okay.
And it's, and some, I think there might be another aerial coming up, or we have other areas. You could see that there's some grading done with these subdivisions to the west there and also to that southwest. So this is, overall, it's relatively flat topography, a little vegetation. This facility is a little bit less than the previous one with the proposed 96 megawatts, also battery storage, substation, and general tie transmission line. And I believe, similar to the previous year, anticipated timing of development to occur by the end of 2026. And the rationale for staff's recommendations for, for denial, similar with the last, you have a sizable area, I believe it was about 148 acres is that southernmost portion, that pink area, that would be then replaced with solar facilities. So you have a fair amount of potential with this Tessa to the south there, that there's apparently development agreements in place, that there's going to be future employment and so on. So, and then also you, you have a planted subdivision to the west and to the south. So, and also the northern bulk of the site is, is, you know, division is residential, so this would also take away that residential potential. So staff would be happy to entertain any further questions.
Similar to the, to the past application, Chairman Supervisor, this is located on the I-8 corridor. It's in Casa Grande's planning area. There is a lot of economic development and industrial development occurring in the area. Tractor supply, obviously Walmart, distribution center, the, the new facility that, I forgot the name of it. Well, Lucid's there, but the new facility that's going to be constructed, that's a supplier to the, to the chip plant to the, to the north. There's, there's a ton of development going in and adjacent to that, that I-8 corridor, obviously a Tessa to the south, access to, to that interstate highway, et cetera. One thing I forgot to mention in the previous item is, is we have discussed these projects with James Smith as well, who was, who was here earlier from, from the economic development perspective. Similar to the last case, we will be, Casa Grande's been notified, asked to comment. We will be reaching out to Casa Grande directly to get comment from them since it's in their planning area. And it still has to go back to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you for meeting.
Is that everything today? We have all these guests in the back. I thought we were going to hear from them. I guess they're just monitoring us. Okay. Is there anything else? All right. With that, I want to thank everybody for attending. And Supervisor Kavanaugh, you can relax and not hurry in now.
Thank you.
Okay. We're adjourned.